Good morning, Yvette. Can you hear me?
Good morning. Yes, I can. Good morning to all of you.
I missed the inauguration yesterday, but it looked like a great ceremony. Two years ago, I missed the inauguration because I was in the hospital, but I got sworn in by a local judge. So I'm pleased. It was such a beautiful ceremony yesterday.
Yes.
Thank you.
Governor Ivy, you look great in green. This is called St. Patrick's Day.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. Good morning. The February 11th, 2021 meeting of the Alabama State Board of Education will now come to order. We want to welcome two new board members this morning, Dr. Tanya Chestnut from District 5 and Ms. Belinda McRae, District 7. Dr. James Troglan, pastor of the First Baptist Church in Wetumka, will now offer the invocation. Mr. Troglan, Dr. Troglan.
Thank you, Governor Ivy and all of those who are gathered there. I had a question from Dr. Langham to make a statement. This is especially good for me. I'll be retiring from the active pastorate, full-time pastorate at the end of April. And I want to say I'm a 21-year result of the Alabama Public Education System. That's not 21 years in elementary and high school now. That includes college and graduate school and doctoral work and additional doctoral work at UAB. So it's good to be here, and so I'll do just in prayer now. Would you pray with me? Our Father, we ask for the foremost for your presence in this gathering today. The issues and decisions to be made are far too important to be made only on a human level. Too many wise future individuals in our own state lay before this body, far too important for our own feeble and personal desires and agendas to rule. So, Father, by your presence, with insight, wisdom, and conviction where necessary, but the greatest good for the greatest majority can be found and implemented. Father, the wisest and best we have are gathered here today to serve the children of our great state. As they began their careers, their hearts were given over to service and the good of others. We know it is possible for anyone to become cheated, led astray, or just become tired to the point of simply going through the motions. Let that not be true today, not here, not now, not among these men and women. Renew their hearts, open their eyes to what plan it should be. May they remember their faces with the children they have taught and led. May the children's smiles be remembered and their tears as tender as they were yesterday. May they remember the dreams shared by their students and how they're able to move that life closer to the dream's realization. May their own dreams as educators be renewed in their hearts. Help them to remember that dreams cannot die or they are given to or taken away by others. We listen far too much to the dream killers. We stand with those who have no dreams and give ours away. I remember, Father, my own first-grade teacher, Mrs. Lilly, who taught me to read and opened a new world to me. She opened the door I have never closed. Mr. Light, who taught me mathematics and physics and then he offered personal discipline. And Mr. Patton, who taught me as a 17-year-old boy out of quitting school and believed in me enough to make sure I stayed with him. Those are teachers who I've long since gone, some of which touched me over 62 years ago, but they did touch me. May these gathered who discuss such profound subjects as budgets, curriculum, and gilding not forget the children. The children who we once were and were given a chance in the future, the children of today who look to them for the same chance. They decide to come first, Father, and all else will be easier to decide. I thank you for your service and dedication, for the courage to maintain as true and as normal wherever possible, for the creativity when alternative threats be sought, and the wisdom to know the difference. Father, keep them at peace and give insight, help them recall the manners they have taught others when exasperated. Help them to see they are one team. They are our team, our champions. And we hold them up as such, and, Father, may they deserve it. In Christ's name, amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Dr. Troglan, and congratulations on your upcoming retirement.
Thank you.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag of the United States. Attention, salute, and pledge. A pledge of allegiance-
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic of which it stands, one nation, indivisible, liberty, and justice in all.
Ms. Thornton, please call the roll.
Mrs. Bell.
Present.
Dr. Chestnut.
Present.
Governor Ivy.
Present.
Dr. McCarty.
Present.
Ms. McRae.
Present.
Dr. Reynolds.
Present.
Dr. Richardson.
Present.
Mrs. West.
Here.
Mrs. Ziegler.
Here.
We have a quorum, Governor.
Thank you. We will now consider a motion to temporarily suspend certain provisions of the Alabama Administrative Code related to the Department for the Alabama State Board of Education to vote by raised hand the provisions related to the establishment of a quorum by physical presence and meeting by electronic means. Is there a motion to suspend the rule in this manner? We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second, Yvette Richardson.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Each board member will indicate his or her vote when called upon by saying yes or no. Ms. Thornton, please call the roll.
Mrs. Bell.
Yeah.
Dr. Chestnut.
Yes.
Governor Ivy.
Yes.
Dr. McCarty.
Yes.
Mrs. McRae.
Yes.
Dr. Reynolds.
Yes.
Dr. Richardson.
Yes.
Mrs. West.
Yes.
Mrs. Ziegler.
Yes.
Unanimous vote, Governor.
Thank you very much. Moving to item E, we'll now consider a motion to approve the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I saw move.
Second.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. Is any discussion? Each board member will indicate his or her vote when called upon by saying yes or no. Ms. Thornton will now call the roll.
Mrs. Bell.
Yeah.
Dr. Chestnut.
Yes.
Governor Ivy.
Yes.
Dr. McCarty.
Yes.
Mrs. McRae.
Yes.
Dr. Reynolds.
Yes.
Dr. Richardson.
Yes.
Mrs. West.
Yes.
Mrs. Ziegler.
Yes.
Unanimous vote, Governor.
Thank you. We'll now consider a motion to approve the minutes for the January 14th, 2021 meeting of the Alabama State Board of Education. Is there a motion to approve these minutes?
So moved. West.
I'll second. McRae.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Each board member will indicate his or her vote when called upon by saying yes or no. Ms. Thornton will now call the roll.
Mrs. Bell.
Yeah.
Dr. Chestnut.
Yes.
Governor Ivy.
Yes.
Dr. McCarty.
Yes.
Mrs. McRae.
Yes.
Dr. Reynolds.
Yes.
Dr. Richardson.
Yes.
Mrs. West.
Yes.
Mrs. Ziegler.
Yes.
Unanimous vote, Governor.
Thank you, Ms. Thornton. Ms. Thornton, has anyone signed up to speak for today?
Yes, ma'am. We have four speakers to speak on the FAFSA policy.
Very good. We look forward to hearing from each one of them.
Governor, I think this is Superintendent Mackey. So Mr. Swan has the list, and Ms. Thornton, I think, has the list of people who've signed up to speak. They are, I think, all speaking remotely. None of them are with us in the room. Is that right?
That's correct.
And so they'll have to be, to either unmute themselves, as their name's called, or unmute. Our communications team will time them, just to let them know they each have two minutes to make their point. There's no further interaction. They cannot ask questions of board members, those sort of things. But I, so I'm gonna, I will turn it over, if it's okay to you, to Mr. Swan and Ms. Thornton, to call them and let each one have their two minutes.
Dr. Mackey, I'd just remind the speakers that they need to identify themselves and who they're associated with, the entity that they're associated with, and remind them that they do have two minutes, and I'll be keeping the timer.
Okay, and if our folks did not hear that, Mr. Swan, our attorney, you could hear him in the microphone there. But speakers have two minutes. Please, at the beginning, identify yourself, who you are and who you represent, and then make your position. And was there anything else? That was it. Thank you.
First name is Kayla Pouncy.
Good morning, all, and thank you so much for sharing your time with us today. My name is Kayla Pouncy, and I'm an undergraduate student at the University of Alabama with Alabama Possible advocating for the free application for federal student aid or the FAFSA. Because as a first-generation college student, I wouldn't be able to afford college without it. Completing the FAFSA to access free aid like the Pell Grant is one of the most efficient and effective ways to direct aid to students who need it. The vast majority of Pell Grant recipients have family incomes of $40,000 or less. Pell Grants have helped tens of millions of undersourced Americans obtain a college education, and this financial aid matters more than ever now. As a recipient of the federal student aid, I can also attest that economic repercussions stemming to 19 will significantly affect both student financial need and college enrollment. Money should not be the deciding factor for students when choosing a college. Scholarships, grants, work-study jobs, and more mean students can spend less time working or worrying about how to fund their next semester and more time investing in their studies. FAFSA is the way to access that crucial aid. Today's students deserve a chance at accessible education, which is why I'm advocating for the FAFSA. Thank you so much.
Second person is Kimberly Walker.
Good morning, Governor Ivy, Dr. Mackey, support members. I'm Kimberly Walker, supervisor of the Council on Counseling for the Marion County Public System. And for years, we have worked very closely with Alabama Possible in providing services for completing FAFSA. We have recently worked very closely with Alabama Possible in helping our parents and students complete the financial aid process. Because, as you all know, most students who apply for FAFSA qualify for financial aid services, and those services are needed rightly to help them pay for their college education. Completing FAFSA and providing resources to help our students and parents complete this process is really needed. We are doing all that we can to help them during the school day, as well as providing resources and programs to help them even after school hours get through this tedious process. Completing FAFSA is greatly needed for our parents and for our students, and any resource or any help and support that can be provided for us to continue this process would be most grateful. Thank you, guys, for your time and for listening.
Third person is Shandra Scott.
First, good morning. I'm Governor Ivy, Superintendent Mackey, and Board of Education members. First, I want to say first, thank you for allowing me to share my thoughts with you this morning. My name is Shandra Scott. I am the Executive Director of Alabama Possible. I'm a statewide nonprofit who has been working since 1993 on removing barriers to prosperity. One way in doing so is to ensuring that every student in our state has access to post-secondary pathway. It is the only way that we're going to meet our statewide attainment goal of 500,000 highly-skilled individuals in Alabama to fulfill our workforce. FAFSA completion is the gateway to post-secondary access. And of course, now that we're faced with such a challenge with COVID-19 and how it is impacting the enrollment in post-secondary institutions in our state, we want to ensure that we are not reversing all of the efforts and all of the hard work that has happened and to make sure we continue to climb in our enrollment with students in our state who are seeking a post-secondary pathway through credential and/or degree. Right now, we're faced with seeing nearly a 17% decline in FAFSA completion, and that is startling and alarming. And we want to make sure that not only do we increase the awareness around FAFSA, but we also increase the completion and provide the supports and resources to our counselors and to our families to be able to complete the FAFSA and to gain access to even other financial aid supports through scholarships or work-study, and that is all connected to the completion of the FAFSA. On the national level, it is known that 92% of students who complete the FAFSA enroll the following fall in a post-secondary pathway. So that is why it is of great urgency that we make sure that our state is equipped and making sure we're raising the awareness on the importance of FAFSA and its completion and how it literally will remove generational poverty in our state. Again, I want to say thank you so much for allowing me to share our thoughts this morning. I'm from Alabama Possible.
Our fourth person is Tim McCartney.
Good morning, Governor Ivy, Dr. Mackey, and honorable members of the Alabama State Board of Education. I'm Tim McCartney, and I'm chairman of the Alabama Workforce Council. I want to share with you a few practical considerations on why it's of the utmost importance that you adopt the FAFSA completion policy before you today. I want to make it clear that there's one major difference between the requirement to complete the civics assessment and the FAFSA completion policy. While civics is important and vital to the proper functioning of our democracy, there's not a mandatory outcome attached, excuse me, there's not a monetary outcome attached to the passing of the civics assessment. However, there is a monetary attachment to the completion of the FAFSA. It's a lot of money. In fact, Alabama's high school seniors are currently leaving over $47 million per year on the table in unclaimed federal student aid. I want to clear up another misconception. The policy before you today is not about sending all students to college. The policy is also not about tracking everyone into a short-term planning program. This FAFSA policy is about allowing students to master their own destiny. Currently, students are required to complete the FAFSA in order to receive financial aid for certificate programs at our community colleges in the same manner that the students are entering University of Alabama or Auburn University. Let me also say that there's nothing in this FAFSA policy that's threatening to anyone's freedom of conscience. The policy is written so that any family may choose not to complete the FAFSA, just like they can do now. The difference is that they will do so only after having been told, if they are foreclosing on their child's ability to receive any form of post-secondary aid if they do not complete the FAFSA. Most post-secondary programs require FAFSA completion to qualify for institutional aid, even as a condition of admission to some students. The FAFSA policy will not be an added burden on our GADs Council because they're already working with each student to develop a graduation plan, and FAFSA completion is one of the most critical elements of that plan. The FAFSA completion process has already been institutionalized in many of Alabama's schools. Today, you should make it so for the rest of them. The policy is good for our students, it's good for the economy, and it's good for the state of Alabama. There's no other policy that this board could pass that could match how much the FAFSA completion policy will do to help us reach the goal of adding 500,000 credential workers to our workforce by the year 2025. So I thank you very much for listening to the advice from business and industry community today and adopting this policy unanimously. Thank you for all that you do toward improving our state and our students.
Thank you all to our four speakers today. Move to item H, action items, unfinished business. Ms. Thornton, is there any unfinished business?
There's no unfinished business.
Okay. Dr. Mackey, before we begin this morning, I'd like to present this proclamation from the governor, which proclaims February 2021 as Career and Technical Education Month in Alabama. Please join me in thanking Dr. Jimmy Hall as State Career and Technical Education Director, his staff, all of Alabama's career and technical education educators, and the thousands of students who are preparing for in-demand career pathways through Alabama Career and Technical Education Program. Under new business, we'll now consider a resolution to recognize Ms. Emily Hurst as the Barbara Fanning Memorial Employee of the Quarter for January through March 2021. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
Wayne Reynolds, so moved.
We have a motion to adopt. Is there a second? Any discussion? Each board member will indicate his or her vote when called upon by saying yes or no. Ms. Thornton, please call the roll.
Mrs. Bell.
Yes.
Dr. Chestnut.
Yes.
Governor Ivy.
Yes.
Dr. McCarty.
Yes.
Mrs. McRae.
Yes.
Dr. Reynolds.
Yes.
Dr. Richardson.
Yes.
Mrs. West.
Yes.
Mrs. Ziegler.
Yes.
Unanimous vote, Governor.
Congratulations, Ms. Hurst. We'll now consider a resolution to adopt the Alabama Administrative Code Rule 290-4-3-03 pertaining to Alabama's Core Teaching Standards. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move approval, Yvette Richardson.
We have a motion to adopt. Is there a second?
Yes, Chestnut.
Is there a resolution to adopt Alabama? Is there a second?
Second, Chestnut.
Thank you. Any discussion? Each board member will indicate his or her vote when called upon by saying yes or no. Ms. Thornton will now call the roll.
Mrs. Bell.
Yeah.
Dr. Chestnut.
Yes.
Governor Ivy.
Yes.
Dr. McCarty.
Yes.
Ms. McRae.
Yes.
Dr. Reynolds.
Yes.
Dr. Richardson.
Yes.
Mrs. West.
Yes.
Mrs. Ziegler.
Yes.
Unanimous vote, Governor.
Thank you, Ms. Thornton.
Governor.
We'll now consider a resolution announcing the intent to adopt amended Alabama Administrative Code Rule 290-3-1-02-21 pertaining to the free application for federal student aid and access to federal student aid. Do I hear a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move approval, Yvette Richardson.
Second.
We have a motion to adopt. Is there a second?
Second, McCarty.
Is any discussion?
Yes, Governor.
Each board member will indicate. Is any discussion?
Yes, Governor. This is Tracy West.
Yes, Ms. West.
Yes, thank you, Governor. Thank you, Ms. Ziegler and Dr. Mackey. I've received an enormous amount of feedback on this issue over the last week, and I think that there has been some confusion regarding what we are doing today. I, first of all, like to publicly thank every single person that contacted me from around the state, not just in my district. As a local school board member for many years, the very best policies our board passed had a lot of civic engagement. Dr. Mackey, could you please explain exactly what we're doing here today and the process that we'll be moving through in the next 30 days?
Yes, ma'am. I'd be glad to do that. So we, today is announcing the intent to adopt a new rule, the FAFSA rule, which has been out there. What the rule in essence does, it adds a, for graduating seniors, it adds that they would either have to complete the FAFSA, which is the federal aid for student, free application for federal student aid, or they would have to turn in a note that says they are not going to complete it. That note could either be signed by a parent or guardian or by the student, as long as the student is of majority age, 18. In addition, if a student is unable to complete for any reason, then the principal can notify the superintendent, and the superintendent can waive the requirement for any student. So that's the intent of the rule. The rule final adoption would not be for two meetings hence. So what the board is doing today, we've discussed this a couple of work sessions. It's hard, of course, the December work session, you remember, I was in quarantine. January work session, we were back and all able to do some discussion. But what the board will be doing today is basically putting it out and saying, it's our intent to do this. There's a 45-day period for public comment before it can be actually put into the rules by the board. And if you made any modifications or something in between now and then, that could be done. So because it's 45 days and the meetings are 30 days apart, it's essentially a two-meeting gap. So the board would not, could not vote on anything final until the April meeting. So that is what we're doing today, though. You're putting it out there publicly to say, we've been discussing this in the work sessions, but now it is up for, we're publicly announcing that it's our intent to consider this at a later meeting. Does that answer your question?
It does. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Mackey. Thank you, all.
Governor, may I speak?
Governor, this is Stephanie Bell. I would like to be recognized.
I would like to be recognized.
What purpose, Ms. Bell?
To speak.
On what subject?
Regarding the subject that we're discussing today, on the agenda at this point.
Okay, Ms. Bell.
The FAFSA acceptance. Obviously, if we accept it, then it gives the impression that we're voting for it. You know that I do not agree with mandating, and there is a difference between counseling, which we actually do have as a requirement, the counselors have it in their own notebooks that they tell students about the FAFSA, and they have been doing that. Obviously, the students who vote today are good examples, in Alabama, Thomas, I know in Birmingham, they're discussing that as well. But the problem that we have with this mandate, and it is a mandate, it is very difficult to go through a waiver process, and I think next year will be an especially difficult year for everyone, as this year has been. The fact that we have students who have already started the track for graduation, being required to fill out, have their parents or guardians fill out the FAFSA and provide their social security number to parents, alien registration number if they're not a U.S. citizen, the federal income tax returns, the W-2 forms, and other records of money earned, the bank statements and records of investments if applicable, records of untaxed income if applicable, an FSA ID to sign electronically, even though they're not really on track to want to even consider it. However, we already have it as an option, we already have it, and those students, again, are prime examples of those who have chosen, thankfully, to take that route. The board has never said that they're opposed to FAFSA. It's not an easy process, even though they have supposedly streamlined it. I've talked to a number, a large number of parents, both in my district and outside my district, I do represent, my vote represents the entire state, so I look at it as a statewide requirement, which it will be. We have superintendents, we have counselors already working to try to get students to do that. The money must go with the student. It does not go to the institution directly, although that's the acceptance process, and yes, but the student is ultimately held responsible for ensuring that they requalify, they'll add another FAFSA the following year, and if it's a four-year program, it'll be each year thereafter, and if they go to graduate school, perhaps. But the problem that we have, this is, this is a mandate. I have not talked to one person, a parent, or even a counselor, that thinks it's a good idea to make this a mandate. Even if a waiver is provided, that waiver process and anyone who's ever been through a waiver process is not the easiest route to follow, but we actually do have an opt-in process, which actually has been working. Forty-seven states, including Alabama, make it an option to opt, again, to opt-in. If a guardian or a parent makes a mistake, they are the ones held liable. There's a $20,000 penalty or up to five years in prison if they in any way provide false information, and they have to, of course, pay back any money that they have received. It's not the institution that pays it back ultimately, sometimes they're held responsible because they made some bad decisions regarding some, some of the students. But this is a policy that is not only unnecessary because we already do this with our students, but it's also one that is holding students and their parents or guardians responsible in ways that they perhaps may not completely understand if they choose to go into debt or and/or accept monies. And again, there are penalties if, and it's an easy process to prosecute if a found that they have been, they provided improperly false information. So I'm, again, opposed to mandate. It's not saying that we're opposed at all to the FAFSA. In fact, we have already, as a board, many of the board members have, were not a part of that process of encouraging, actually inspiring the counselors to participate and encouraging students to apply for the FAFSA, look at the FAFSA as an option, and fully understand what they're stepping into once they agree to accept that. Accepting this policy is an essence, and I've been doing this for longer than you have, Governor, this is an essence, grasping the adoption. It's the first step in the adoption process for our administrative code, much more difficult to undo than it is for to undo even a resolution. This is a bad idea, maybe with good intentions, I'm not faulting anyone who supported it today and what they said, but I do think that we need to step back and, one, realize that forty-seven states have not decided, they have decided to do what we're doing already, and that is to opt-in. Perhaps we can do a better job of encouraging our students to look at the monies that were mentioned by the Workforce Development Council member or chair. The problem is, again, the responsibility, the liability is being placed on individuals who may not fully understand that, and we're also putting them through a process that is completely unnecessary and can be difficult depending on who is your local superintendent. We have wonderful local superintendents, we have great counselors, we have wonderful counselors, but at this point, having to put a waiver process on top of all of the other things they're going to be dealing with is just a bad idea, and I, and the other states, they have also chosen to take the route, the three states, two of them are about to back out, they're talking about it, the board, State Board of Education did not support it, it went through the legislature, two of the legislatures are looking at backing out of this, they have never really implemented it because COVID hit, it's a brand-new idea, but again, they're looking at all of the things that I've mentioned. I think that we need to step back and realize that we already have that process in place. We don't need a mandate.
Ms. Bell, you certainly made your point. I understand there are thirteen other states who are considering opting in. Any more discussion?
Yes, Governor. This is Cynthia McCarty. I'd like to discuss the adoption to review the FAFSA.
Very good. You're recognized.
Thank you, Governor. I certainly believe in the value and the potential of all Alabama's youth, and I celebrate when they transcend their humble beginnings to earn credentials and college degrees. Yet my heart aches when I witness students who leave college because of the grueling, unrelenting stress of trying to pay the tuition and the fees. Or like some of our students, they do graduate, but they graduate with sometimes over $100,000 in student loan debt that will cripple their future after graduation. I believe that completing the FAFSA has benefits for all of us. Some students will never consider themselves college material unless they are convinced that they can afford it. They don't want to be a burden to their families, so many will not even attempt it if they not, are not encouraged. Others who do complete the FAFSA will earn merit scholarships, leadership scholarships, but if they have not completed the FAFSA, they won't even be considered for these scholarships. All Alabamians will benefit when our young people can master the skills and receive the credentials necessary to earn a meaningful employment. My concern, and I think several of us had this concern, was whether it would be an obstacle for our schools and for those hard-working educators in our systems, so reached out and learned that it would not be an obstacle, that many career coaches are more than willing to step in and help out so that our schools are not burdened any more than they already are. I believe there is value in exploring this. We will continue to receive feedback, I hope, and will move forward in determining the pros and the cons of this action. I have to share one story. Driving down this morning, in the rain, on country roads, I received a phone call from a superintendent from a large district in, from a large school system in District Six. He had responded to my plea for information and feedback about this action. He's very strongly supportive, wanted to make sure that I heard his voice before I came today. He reminded me that the FAFSA completion is not just for our students who are seeking a bachelor's degree, but it is also for those students who want to be truck drivers, who may want to go six to eight weeks at Calhoun Community College and earn a truck driving license. It's a $2,000 to $3,000 cost that many can't even consider unless they complete the FAFSA. So I support this vote and plan to vote yes. Thank you, Governor.
Thank you, Ms. McCarty. Any more discussion?
Governor Ivy, I would be remiss, this is Yvette Richardson, if I did not speak up. I have also talked to many of my superintendents as well as counselors in the area and parents, and ultimately, one superintendent, who is the superintendent of one of the largest districts in the Birmingham area, mentioned that he is from New Orleans, and that when this legislation was pushed forward there, it made a big difference for the young people there in line that he even had relatives who had to go through the completion of this process. Many of my superintendents who are in the black belt have said that without the FAFSA completion, a lot of the young people who want to go to college or two-year college would not have the means without the completion of the FAFSA. Therefore, I am speaking, letting you know, I am in support because I feel it would open many doors for many young people otherwise who would not have any other resources. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Richardson. Anyone else?
Yes, Governor Ivy. I had the opportunity to speak with counselors, superintendents, and representatives in higher ed as well, and I wanted to hear their thoughts, and I agree with the necessity of requiring this and the difference that it will make in the lives of students, especially those that may be first-generation college students, so I look forward to supporting this effort.
Thank you, Dr. Chestnut.
Governor, may I speak?
Anybody else?
Yes, ma'am, Jackie Ziegler, please.
You recognize Ms. Ziegler?
Thank you. I just want to, I appreciate everything about which I've heard and from the speakers as well. I just want to add a couple of concerns about which I have heard, and I have not had that in any of the speaking points, so I think it needs to be, be mentioned. I have great concerns about what we call that segment of society, the under-the-radar ones, we have migratory students, and we have the homeless, and they are ones that want to stay under the radar, and by doing something of this that is bringing their name and information up, that is a great concern, and that is what I'm hearing from my districts that have the larger migratory student in, you know, population and the homeless. So those are just two areas of which I want people to consider and think about. And again, we also have in our guidance counselor policy, a very strong one about how important FAFSA is. Nothing I have heard negates we understand the importance of it. We just need to bring it forth as a point with our superintendents, our principals, our teachers and counselors, to bring that up to the top and go ahead and bring that into the conversation about the importance, and I think it can be done easily without bringing it forth into the code. Thank you, Governor.
Ms. Ziegler, just for the record, there's the option to opt out, so you don't have to give a reason for opting out if a parent or guardian wants to do that, so, well, they're homeless, so, under-the-radar screen doesn't have to come out. Any more discussion? Each board member will indicate his or her vote when called upon by saying yes or no. Ms. Thornton will now call the roll.
Mrs. Bell?
No.
Dr. Chestnut?
Yes.
Governor Ivy?
Yes.
Dr. McCarty?
Yes.
Mrs. McRae?
Yes.
Dr. Reynolds?
No.
Dr. Richardson?
Yes.
Mrs. West?
Yes.
Mrs. Ziegler?
No.
The vote carries, Governor.
Thank you, Ms. Thornton. We will now consider a resolution announcing the intent to adopt amended Alabama Administrative Code, Chapter 290-8-8 pertaining to specialized treatment centers. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution? Move approval, Yvette Richardson.
Second, West.
We have a motion to adopt, we have a second. Any discussion? Each board member will indicate his or her vote when called upon by saying yes or no. Ms. Thornton will now call the roll.
Mrs. Bell?
Yes.
Dr. Chestnut?
Yes.
Governor Ivy?
Yes.
Dr. McCarty?
Yes.
Mrs. McRae?
Yes.
Dr. Reynolds?
Yes.
Dr. Richardson?
Yes.
Mrs. West?
Yes.
Mrs. Ziegler?
Yes.
Unanimous vote, Governor.
Thank you, Ms. Thornton. Wayne Reynolds?
Item C, ma'am, or did I miss that?
Item what?
C, Charlie.
Wait, Governor, if I may, this is Dr. Mackey's. So we do need to go back and do Item B, a resolution to approve educator preparation program at Faulkner University, and Item C, a resolution in honor of National School Breakfast Week.
Yes, that was my point of order, thank you, Governor.
I'm going back to Item B as in boy. Consider a resolution to approve an alternative Class A elementary education grades K through six educator preparation program at Faulkner University. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution? We have a motion to adopt, is there a second?
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Each board member will indicate his or her vote when called upon by saying yes or no. Ms. Thornton, please call the roll.
Mrs. Bell?
Yes.
Dr. Chestnut?
Yes.
Governor Ivy?
Yes.
Dr. McCarty?
Yes.
Mrs. McRae?
Yes.
Dr. Reynolds?
Yes.
Dr. Richardson?
Yes.
Mrs. West?
Yes.
Mrs. Ziegler?
Yes.
Unanimous vote, Governor.
Thank you so much. Now we'll do Item C as in cat. Consider a resolution to recognize the week of March 8 through 12 as National School Breakfast Week in Alabama schools. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved, second?
So moved, Stephanie Bell.
Is there a second? We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Each board member will indicate his or her vote when called upon by saying yes or no. Ms. Thornton, call the roll.
Mrs. Bell?
Yes.
Dr. Chestnut?
Yes.
Governor Ivy?
Yes.
Dr. McCarty?
Yes.
Mrs. McRae?
Yes.
Dr. Reynolds?
Yes.
Dr. Richardson?
Yes.
Mrs. West?
Yes.
Mrs. Ziegler?
Yes.
Unanimous vote, Governor.
Thank you so much. Now we'll go to Item I, the executive report. Dr. Mackey, do you have any public or legal information to share?
There is none, Governor.
Thank you. Dr. Mackey, do you have a report, superintendent's report?
Yes, Governor, I do have a report today, and I'd like to address two things in particular. The first is to say a big thank you to Emily Hurst. The first is to say a big thank you to Emily Hurst, who is with us today and was the employee of the quarter, who works in our gifted education program with gifted teachers and LEAs all across the state. So, I'd like to recognize her, Ms. Hurst, if you'd stand for a moment. She does a wonderful job working for us, and of course, we know gifted students across the state, sometimes we forget that they are a very special learning population, and they need a special teacher and guided instruction, and Ms. Hurst is one of our folks who makes sure that happens across the state. I also want to draw attention to and say a very special thank you to you, Governor, and to Dr. Scott Harris and all the folks at Public Health for your recent addition, opening up vaccinations to teachers and other adults that work in schools across the state. In the last three or four days, today's the fourth day, we have seen literally thousands of teachers to get shots in their arms, that first dose of vaccine, most of whom then will get the second dose in mid-March. And so, as it turns out, the vast majority of our teachers who want to get the shot will be able, or I was, Dr. Reynolds corrected me yesterday and said, "Quit saying 'get the shot,' getting the vaccination." Getting the vaccination, they're going to get that vaccination essentially one year to the beginning of this pandemic, and it just reminds us that it has been a very long year. I appreciate you, Governor, and this board for continuing to support us, to work with us and our local schools as we get through what has been obviously the most difficult school year, full year of our lives. But the light is at the end of the tunnel, and another, this morning, we got another good note. I talked to Dr. Harris, and they will be releasing today information about the new quarantine guidelines and, which will follow CDC, so that adults that are vaccinated, once they've reached full immunity, which is two weeks after the second shot, if they meet the stipulations, even if they are close contacts, they will not have to go in quarantine, which should allow us to finish out the last couple of months of this school year in a more normal-looking process. It will not be fully normal. The rules for social distancing and mask-wearing in schools will likely have to persist through this school year, and we know that and understand it, and CDC made that clear. But I'd just point out that we're almost a year into this, and that light at the end of the tunnel is getting brighter and brighter each day, and so, again, my sincere thanks to you, Governor, and Dr. Harris, and to this board for your support during this last year. That concludes my report, Governor.
Thank you, Dr. Mackey. The next elementary and secondary education meeting of the Alabama State Board of Education will be held on Thursday, March 11, 2021, at 10:00 a.m. in the Gordon Person's Building Auditorium. The work session will immediately follow the board meeting in Room Plaza 103 in the Gordon Person's Building. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Aye, so moved.
Second.
Second.
Have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Each board member will indicate his or her vote when called upon by saying yes or no. Ms. Tharnton will now call the roll.
Mrs. Bell?
Yes, yes.
Dr. Chestnut?
Yes.
Governor Ivey?
Yes.
Dr. McCarty?
Yes.
Mrs. McRae?
Yes.
Dr. Reynolds?
Yes.
Dr. Richardson?
Yes.
Mrs. West?
Yes.
Mrs. Ziegler? Unanimous vote, Governor.
Thank you so much. We are now adjourned.
Members, we will reconvene for our work session at 11 o'clock. Reconvene at 11.